And rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the Constitution of this country, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as one. Justice, freedom. Okay, so, uh, public comments. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at BOE Public Meeting is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act, discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Do we have anybody in the room that would like to make public comment? Anyone? Heather Connors?
Yeah, sorry. My name's Heather Connors. I'm a Ram teacher and a Columbia resident, and I saw that there was possible discussion today about Columbia students becoming part of Ram in the old business. So I just wanted to see if there's any comment about that today. I've been talking to a lot of Columbia parents. I'm on the PTO Board for Columbia. I'm also a teacher at Ram, and I think it would be a really great opportunity for our students if they were able to come to Ram. I know a lot of parents are concerned about the current commute our students have going from Columbia to Bolton, as well as Columbia to Eosmith. There's been a lot of transportation issues. Our kids play sports together already, so I think it would be a really great fit, but, you know, so that's it. Just wanting to see if that's a topic of discussion today, and if so, just provide some input.
Thank you. Is there, is there anybody else that was, would like to make public comment?
There's nobody here, Heather.
Okay. All right. Is there any agenda items that anybody would like to add or delete from the agenda? Okay. That will bring us to the Student Representative Reports. Do, do we have Oliver in the, in the room?
Thank you. I was actually lucky enough today to be able to help out the Honest Breakfast for the Underclassmen. It was a really exciting experience. There were so many familiar faces, and it's just a great way to recognize everybody. So I was really glad to be a part of that this morning, and the upper classes is tomorrow, which I'm lucky enough to be a part of as well. We headed our junior prom on May 4th, or May the 4th, to be with you at Gossberry Hills Country Club. I'm very grateful to be able to have gone. It was a great experience, and everybody I've talked to just loved, loved it. Speaking of some more awards, we have awards night this Thursday for all of our students, which is a great opportunity as well. And I think the biggest thing that all juniors and any AP students who'll be testing is finally over. I know myself, I'm very relieved. I think everybody I've talked to, I think we all put in the hard work, and I'm glad it seemed to have payoff, but we'll see in July. And I think even the arts is coming up, and that's a very, very exciting event that I'm personally looking forward to and hoping to be able to show up to this year. And I think it's just really a great opportunity that we have.
So, um, to start off, the elementary, senior elementary school walk-around will be happening June 3rd, which I think will be really exciting and a great way to like end senior year, looking back. I know for me, like, it could, it's so nostalgic going back into the elementary school and being like, wow, like, this feels like not long ago at all. Like yesterday. And also, senior prom happened this Saturday, which was great. It was a great experience for everyone, I think, at St. Thomas Castle. Another thing that is happening very soon is the senior outing, and we'll be heading to Six Flags for that. So I think everyone's really excited for that. Also, Project Brad, so after graduation, there will be some, like, events happening at the school, and everyone's super excited for that. I can't believe graduation is happening so fast. And this is my last Board of Ed meeting, and I really cannot believe that this is the last one. Like, it's actually making me so sad thinking about it, because, I mean, these past few years really have been eventful, and quite, it's been so exciting being a part of it, and I'm so grateful that I've received this opportunity to be a student representative and to, like, see everything that goes on, like, in the board. I think it was also just like such a great learning experience, because being able to, like, see this and being able to meet everyone in the board and being able to see kind of a little bit of what goes into, like, um, running a school was really, like, eye-opening and made me so grateful for everyone here, and I really, like, I would not trade this opportunity for the world. I remember, like, when I first read that email sent by Dr. Briscoe, and I was like, it was, there was an essay you had to write in order to apply for this position, and it was really just like something I'd thought about on the web, and I was like, hmm, you know what, maybe I'll just go for it. And little did I know that it would be such a great experience after that. And I'm just so grateful that I wrote that, like, essay that literally probably took me, like, 30 minutes to write. Great payoff. So yeah, that concludes my final report.
Well, you're always welcome back.
Yes. So Ava, that brings me to the BOE Chair Report, and I did want to thank you for two years of serving as a student rep with the Board of Ed. We have loved having you, and we wish you all the best as you go off on your next adventure. Do you have a, a plan for after graduation?
I do. I'll be heading to Case Western Reserve in the fall to continue my education. I'll be majoring in business, so, and I actually, kind of, that, that major was actually a little bit influenced by this position, so yeah, I'm super excited.
Well, that's great. Thank you very much. And remember that once you graduate and find your community, you can always run for the Board of Ed.
I will keep that in mind.
Okay. Thank you, Ava and Oliver. So the other thing is the budget. As we all know, the budget did pass, and I wanted to just thank everybody for a lot of extra time in working through, putting together the budget, Colin, your staff, all the meetings that you did with the other communities to help them understand how we came to the budget that we came to. You know, people in the community who asked questions and, you know, took, took an interest in it. Passing a budget does not come easily, easily, as we know, and I just wanted to thank everybody for their effort on that. And the final thing that I will mention is I participated in the Teacher Appreciation Day that happened, I believe it was last week, at the middle school, and it was unbelievable. They organized it, asked people for donations of gifts and food. Restaurants in all three towns donated food to the luncheon. Teachers came in on their lunch break, were able to bid on, or kind of do a raffle for prizes. And it was, I had a great time. It was really a lot of fun. And I know at the high school, I wasn't able to participate in that one, but they had similar recognition for the teachers there with luncheons, and, you know, I really, I think it's, we can't thank them enough for the hard work they do, and they are probably in the hardest part where kids are ready to be done, teachers are ready to be done, and there are still a few more weeks to go. But it was really a terrific event, and I would encourage anybody to get engaged with that and check it out next year, because it was well worth it. And that's it for me. Colin?
Yeah, so thanks. So yeah, I'll, I'll piggyback where you just left off, which is just wanted to, you know, publicly state how much we appreciate the contributions that all of our staff, well, yes, it definitely was technically Teacher Appreciation Week last week. We, we just kind of wrapped it all into one. We did Staff Appreciation Week, was able to go to the luncheon that Heather mentioned. There were some events that took place at the high school to recognize the teachers and staff there. The district hosted a taco luncheon, not Taco Tuesday, but Taco Thursday, which I think people were pretty happy with. And again, I just appreciate all the contributions that were made. I, I also want to congratulate the board on passing the budget. I was super excited. I sent a message out to the, to the staff the evening of the referendum and shared the good news. And then I signed off, I finished off with saying, and now we have five months off until we start going through the entire budget process again. It's gonna go, come up, it's gonna come up pretty quick. And then I will, well, I'll break, I'll talk, mention Ava last, but the couple of things that I just want to mention, which is on May 5th, the CIAC hosted their annual Scholar-Athlete Awards Banquet. We had two Ram students who were recognized, two seniors for, two seniors from each member town are recognized who have high academic and athletic careers. They've been exemplary, whose personal standards and achievements have been a model to others, and who possess a high level of integrity, self-discipline, and courage. And I know Penny was there as the principal with Dan and the coaches as well, where Paige Cavallari, who was a cheerleader, was recognized, and Sam Fortin, who's, who does both cross-country, I think, and track. And they were our Ram High School students who were the recipients, so congratulations to them. And then just on the topic of sports, I'll mention that several of our teams are getting ready to compete in postseason play, our spring teams. Baseball's looking solid, has a really strong team, and lacrosse does as well. I don't know, I know softball and tennis are potentially in the mix. I think, I think softball had a game today. I don't know if they won or lost, but hopefully our athletic teams will continue and have success in post, postseason competition. And then the last thing I do want to just say is, Ava, you've been just a joy to work with. Appreciate the contributions that you've made as a member of the board, and your school next year is going to be lucky to get you. I grabbed you, I have a little parting gift. Oliver, you're gonna have to wait till next year, my friend. There you go.
Oh, thank you so much. Oh, it's been a pleasure being here.
Absolutely. And Heather, that concludes my, my report.
Okay. All right, so we have some minutes that we need to approve. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, what did I miss?
Student Program Spotlight first.
Oh, oh my gosh, the most important thing. I'm scrolling the agenda on my phone. I apologize, I'm not there again. Okay, so the Student Program Spotlight, which, Colin, do you want to?
Yeah, yeah, so I'll, I'll just kind of kick things off. So, so as the board knows, we, we identify students to receive the CAVE Student Leadership Awards Program, which is inclusive of 7th and 8th grade students, along with two high school students who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. Two students from each school in a CAVE member district are eligible to receive the CAVE Student Leadership Award. School principals work with their staff to identify students who exhibit leadership skills based on the following criteria, and I'll just read this. Willingness to take on challenges, capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work well with others, willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and ability to honor a commitment. So it is with great pleasure that I am gonna have Carrie Ann Bell just to stand, stand up and introduce our middle school students. I just want to let the board members know, I did mention this to Heather earlier. Both of our senior recipient, both of our high school recipients, I'm sorry, had conflicts and couldn't be here for the start of this meeting. But we wanted to recognize them, and so I know it's a little bit out of order, but there, when they arrive, we're gonna cut, we'll finish whatever agenda item we're on, take a pause, Penny will introduce those high school students, and, and then we'll continue along with the meeting. Again, I recognize it's a little bit out of order, but I don't think anybody's gonna be worried about it in this particular case, so. So with that being said, Carrie Ann Bell, our Assistant Principal at the, at the middle school, is gonna introduce our award winners.
Hello, everyone. It's an honor to be here tonight and present this award to two of our wonderful 7th graders at the middle school. Our first CAVE Award winner is Nicholas Peach. Nicholas Peach is a 7th grader here at the middle school on the inquiry team. The inquiry team shared that Nico was a student who embodies qualities such as being a hard-working, a science scholar, a good friend, a quiet leader, who working with is truly a rewarding task. Nico is dedicated to his academic pursuits, constantly striving for excellence in all his academics. Not only is he committed to his studies, but he also excels in building strong relationships with his peers, always being there to offer support and guidance. He possesses a natural ability to lead by example and inspiring others to follow in his footsteps. Nico likes to play basketball, soccer, baseball, and golf throughout the year. He enjoys playing music and plays both the saxophone and guitar. Nico is a member of our choir, band, and jazz band, and participates in a couple after-school activities like SOAR and the Alternate Energy Race Club. He's a well-rounded, curious student who loves to explore and investigate different ideas, which recently led him to independently submit an invention to the Connecticut Invention Convention. Congratulations, Nico.
So we have, have some certificates. I think I have photographer in the audience.
Our second CAVE Award winner is Samantha Maxwell. Samantha Maxwell is a 7th grader at the middle school on the red team. Sam is passionate about music and dance. She's an active participant in her school band, chorus, and jazz band, and was selected to be a member of this year's Eastern Regional Concert Band. Sam dances at a studio in town and is an assistant teacher at the studio, working with younger students. She attends church at the Salvation Army, where she plays in the young people's band and the senior band. Sam also enjoys helping others and is able to do volunteer work through her church as well. This winter, she was able to organize a hat and scarf drive to help those in need within our own community. And Sam, along with a few of her classmates, also started our first-ever Ram Middle School Kids Lit Quiz Team. The red team stated that Samantha embodies, encompasses, and represents the absolute best of all of us here at Ram Middle School. She strives for excellence daily and pushes herself in all of her classes. Samantha is a true leader in the classroom. She is kind and supportive as a member of our Ram Middle School community, ready to lend a hand to students around her. She aims for excellence not only in academics, but in her extracurricular activities as well. Congratulations, Samantha.
So when the high school students are both here, Penny will let me know, and we'll find a natural way to get them.
Okay. So now approval of the minutes?
Yes.
All right, we've got the minutes from April 22nd regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular April 22nd, 2024 Board of Education meeting?
I'll make the motion, Joe Coletti.
Second, Scott Saya.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, the motion passes. We have the minutes from the May 6, 2024 special meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 6, 2024 Board of Education District Budget Meeting?
So moved, Gabe Marks.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay. Motion passes. The minutes from the May 6 District Budget Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 6, 2024 Board of Education Special Meeting?
So moved, Scott Saya.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second, Mike Dohler.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Abstain? The motion passes. All right. So that brings us to Old Business, which is the discussion of school choice with Columbia's school district. We had talked about this a while ago. We had decided to kind of table the discussion until we were done with the budget process. We've got through the budget process. We want to bring this back up again. I believe, Colin, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had thought that it needed, like, a subcommittee to kind of look at all the different aspects of it and make a recommendation to the board. And so we are actually looking for members of the Board of Ed who would be interested in serving on that subcommittee. And I believe Joe Coletti. And Colin, who, there was a second person, was it?
Drew reached out and said, he, he's not here today, and I'm not volunteering him because he's not here, but he did, he communicated an email that he was interested in being a part of this group as well. Oh, we can assign him. Exactly.
We can assign him.
Amy's interested.
Amy, I'd be interested in doing it as well.
Yeah, ju- just, just so the board understands kind of what I'm anticipating, because I, I understand we're going into the summer, time commitment, all that fun stuff. So, you know, I'm anticipating having a few virtual meetings to discuss this. They'd be public subcommittee meetings. It's a special meeting that, you know, where people are, we would identify a, a chair of this special committee. That would be done at the first meeting, as we would do with any typical subcommittee. And then I, you know, I would anticipate, you know, having a few meetings, having some conversation, gathering data, you all giving me direction as far as what it is, what information it is that you would like to have. I would anticipate Penny as the building principal to be a part of this conversation as well. You know, we did have members of the administrative team from Columbia talk to us previously. I'm quite confident that they'd be willing to come and, and speak to this smaller group. So it, I, I don't see it as being a significantly time-intensive commitment, is, is the point that I'm trying to make. It's gonna be probably a handful of meetings where you, you know, you're asking me to get some data, I'll bring the data back to you, and then we would bring the information and share with the full board.
And Colin, just to refresh our memory, we're talking about 9th through 12th grade, right? We're not talking about middle school. It's just high school, or is it both?
Correct. So, so their, Porus Porter School is a K to 8 district, so they, they, it would be high school students only. And, and, you know, just that, how we would take those students in would be a part of the conversation and a part of the board's decision. Would we start off by saying, hey, we're just gonna take kids coming in as 9th graders? And then the next year would be 9th and 10th graders, and then the next year after that would be 9th, 10th, and 11th, and working them, as opposed to just kind of opening it up to, potentially opening it up to, you know, in the, in year one of all kids, 9th through 12th. So that would be part of the conversation that we would have.
I've forgotten if we have other districts that are sending us students.
We do not.
We didn't, nobody else.
We do not.
And when they come in, in the middle school, the kids are grouped into teams, and are they pretty, they're pretty segregated, right? They, they spend most of their time with their team?
I would say they spend a significant amount of time with their team, yes.
Right. So that, when the new students come in, it's, it's not, they're not, oh, this is the Columbia kids, because there's gonna be a whole, whole mixing of, of groups that hadn't really mixed so far. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay.
So Heather, we have three people right now, which certainly is a sufficient number for a subcommittee. I don't know if there's anybody else that's, that's interested. I would just work with members of the subcommittee to figure out the first day in time for Mark.
Okay. Great. And so is this subcommittee gonna meet over the summer?
I'll talk to members and see what their schedule would permit, but I, I certainly think that the sooner we start the conversations, the better it is. Just because if there is gonna be a decision that is made one way or the other, we'd want to let the people from Columbia know. I, I will tell you that prior to this meeting, before I put this on the agenda, I actually called Barbara Wilson, who is the superintendent for Columbia Public Schools, also happens to be a Hebron resident, and just said, I want to make sure before we travel down this road, you guys still want to do this? And she said, oh, absolutely. She is continuing to hear from parents within the community that, that there is a high level of interest in this. So, so yeah, but yeah, I would anticipate getting started this year and seeing what availability board members would have over the summer months as well.
This would be for the 25, 26?
Not for next school year, correct, for the year after, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay. Second thing up under Old Business is the second read of policies. It's item 10.2A on the agenda. So do we have a motion to adopt policy 4153, 4253, reports of suspected abuse, neglect, sexual assault of students by school employees as presented?
So moved, Gabe Marks.
Second, Amy Rometchak.
Okay. Discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, that motion passes. To 10.2B, do we have a recommendation to adopt policy 4183, 4283, bloodborne pathogens as presented?
So moved, Scott Saya.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second, Gabe Marks.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, motion passes. That brings us to 10.2C. Do we have a motion to adopt policy 1350, non-discrimination community as presented?
So moved, Scott Saya.
Thank you. A second?
Second, Gabe Marks.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining? And that motion passes. Alrighty. 10.2D, do we have a motion to delete policy 1126, citizen participation at Board of Education meetings?
So Joe Coletti?
A second?
Second, Amy Romichuk.
Discussion on this one? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay. And the last policy is 10.2E. Do we have a motion to delete policy 1164, spokesperson for Board of Education?
So moved, Mike Boyer.
Second, Scott Saya.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anyone abstaining? And that motion passes. Okay. That brings us to new business. The personnel report?
So I just have two resignations to share as a part of the personnel report for this month. Brooke Barber, wellness and health teacher for the district. She teaches both at the middle school and at the high school, has resigned effective June 30, 2024. Ms. Barber has been employed by the district since March 22, 2011. And then Christina Chalky, school counselor for Ram Middle School, has resigned effective June 30, 2024. She has been employed at the middle school since August 31, 2020. And that concludes my personnel report.
Okay. Item 11.2 is the Witsen's Food Service Overview.
Turn it over to Eva.
All right. So with us this evening, we have John Pugner, who is the district manager, regional district manager for Witsen's. He is here to give us an overview of Witsen's family foods so that we can get to know Witsen's and what they do for us.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time and patience, as we all have long days. But I wanted to just give you a little bit of an overview of this year and a little bit of what's happening in our world and certainly what we're looking forward to next year in brevity. But certainly. So we're going to talk a little bit about people, food and communication, which are our three pillars and our, that our company is founded and built on. And we're going to look at a few statistics and some participation results from this year and a couple from the past couple of years to see some comparisons. And at the same time, some highlights from the current year and some updates for next year. So we had a, do we have Tim on the, on the line? Do we have Tim connected?
I'm here.
Hi, Tim. So I just introduced, Tim is our ops manager, who was, it's a newly created position that we, we made this year and it's a company to help support the, the operations departments in our schools. And Tim is local in Killingley and the Rhode Island area and spends some time here with, with Jeff, who is our new general manager, who has an infant at home. So he's probably sleeping because he has to be here tomorrow for breakfast. So he's getting a good night's sleep. But we had a general manager replacement back in December. Kate left us and Jeff came in. So we transitioned Jeff a few months ago. During that time, we've also added two new team members to the, to the team. And all of our team has completed the mandatory USDA and state training hours and requirements for, for the program going forward this year. So I don't know if you guys could see this one, but I'll just explain it a little bit. So what we did is try to take a look at participation of what the meal counts and lunch counts look like over the last three years, understanding that the 22, the 21, 22, 22, 23 years were directly affected by the COVID situation. And the 23, 24 year is more normal, but still with the breakfast portion of the meals being supported by the state. So those are all free this year. And any student that is a reduced eligibility is also a free lunch student this year as well. And as I, as you see, the meal counts are pretty good for breakfast. They've actually increased, you know, from the 41,000 or 42,000 that we had in 21, 22. Remember that that was a lot of people that were not in school and a lot of non-congregate and a lot of feeding and a lot of different ways that we don't, we don't do anymore. And through the waivers that USDA allowed us. And then last year in 22, 23, we still had a good year with breakfast because it was supported through universal free. But the students had to be in school and there was no more non-congregate feeding. And this year it becomes more, again, of a hybrid where the students are supported by universal free breakfast through the state and not the federal programs. So with that said, just to address the letter that I had sent to Colin on the 15th of May, the current school year is supported through stable funding, which is the state transition assistant for breakfast and lunch, which provides free breakfast to all students and free lunches to all reduced eligibility students. And that's in the current year. Looking towards next year, everything is pretty much gone. We have no indication that there will be any support, additional support from USDA or state. And we haven't forecasted any of that into our financial projections for next year, knowing that there, there may be, but again, we don't, we don't know at this point in time. So at this point, from federal and from state, there will be no additional federal or state assistance into the programs, which is very different from what's been going on the last three or four years. So breakfast participation, thanks, sir. Basically is higher in the current year than it has been, which is really good because obviously kids don't pay. So that's a really good thing. Next year, we'll, we'll look at the, the numbers, how they're going to be affected a little bit based on the fact that everyone goes back to paid breakfast. Okay, lunch. Lunch meals, you'll see on the orange is the actual current year. So you'll see the trend in the current year down because this year the meals are not supported by universal free. So the last two previous, they were, so you'll see the, the blue, the dark blue and the lighter blue higher, this year lower. So it's all expected that that's what's going to happen. And this is a trend across all districts. This is not just at Ram. This is the whole, this is our whole industry. And then lunch participation, although remains pretty high, about 46%, it is trended down from the previous two years, as you could see. Go ahead, Eric. So we just wanted to talk a little bit about Witsen's and our passion for food. And we're built on family. Company is born out of nine brothers and sisters from Long Island, of which two of them still maintain positions in the company. And, and actively are in the company still and are part of our growth going forward. That didn't come across. All right. So that's, the blanks up there just didn't come into the presentation, but it should be food, family and service. That's what we're built on. So we have great tasting food and we treat everybody like family and hopefully that we're serving you just like you would want to be served. And there's a lot of, a lot of passion that goes into that on, on our end. Okay. So financially, everybody's interested in the outcome. So this current year, we are going to meet our financial obligation contractually. We project that. Next year, we also feel that we can run this program in a slight profit situation, not aggressively, but at least maintain profitability by doing a few things. We anticipate that there will be a drop in breakfast participation due to the termination of the state's stable funding, which we talked about. We will be within a three to five percentile increase in our wage package with benefits in tax and benefits. We anticipate that the state minimum wage will again rise on January 1, 2025, although the formula is not quite known yet, but at least 3% at this point in time over current year. Although inflation has subsided and I think everyone watches the news and understands the dynamic there and the grocery prices and what they are, the supply chain is still affected in our industry as well. So we are anticipating a 5% increase in food costs year over year, a little bit less in the food, in the paper and cleaning, as last year was a lot more and it's a little bit less this coming forecast. And then as far as the CPI, there is a clause inside of the contract that allows for the Witsen's management and administrative fee to be increased based on a CPI index, which is a March index on an annual basis. And that is a negotiable number based on the number that the state provides, which this year was 4.6%, which last year was 8.2%. So obviously it's calmed down a little bit on that side. And we have partnered with the district and agreed to a 3.6% increase on that going forward. We also tested what they call a price equity formula, which the state and the USDA mandate us to on a, on a yearly basis, which basically measures what you're charging for meals for a paid student against what a reimbursable meal would be for a free student. So obviously there's a gap there. And that gap right now runs about 31 cents, but the district doesn't really have to address that next year. And Colin will, I think, deal, would talk about that a little bit in what we want to present for pricing next year as far as meal price increases to be able to stay ahead of the curve, with the curve and a little bit ahead of the curve going in for next year. A little bit on highlights for next year or for this year, sorry. So breakfast at the middle school was changed so that last year, if you can remember, and I know that the high school students don't know this, but it was downstairs here. And this year we moved it back, I think in December, I think we moved it upstairs. So it's been a success upstairs. We've been able to offer more hot meals, more hot variety to the students because we're actually working off the lunch lines that we actually serve the lunch on. So we actually have a little more choice to the kids for breakfast. We actually, last year in our presentation, showed that we were granted $25,000 from a grant that we purchased salad bars. And we offer the salad bars in the, in the middle school and the high school and position that so the students can take different things with their lunch, different fresh fruits and vegetables, as well as if they want to put together a whole meal, they can do that at, at those bars as well. The other thing that we talked about last year was the deli, which is the May to Water Deli, which is the big busiest station that we have. We actually purchased through the funding that the program had excess funding in the previous year, Turbo Panini Grills, which really accelerate the volume that we can do. They're very, very fast. They're similar to what you see in these Dunkin' Donuts and all these other restaurants where you go in and you go out. So they're, they're very, very good. And they've really helped us to keep the, keep the lines moving in those, in those, in that area especially. The other part of last year was, I think they, we talked about there was capital funding for a new walk-in freezer and refrigerator for upstairs in the main kitchen. That was all completed last summer. And right up to the deadline of just about opening of school, it's a little bit, I think we actually did have to put the refrigerator box, a temporary box outside for, for a week or so to make sure that we were going to be ready. But yeah, it went, went down to the wire. It was a big, 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 big project. There's also some, been some realignment on the, on the serving lines upstairs in both the middle school and the high school. So where pizza was in certain places now, there's might be something else. And so there's been those changes. And I think the kids have, the students have accepted that. And then there's been some, some different things that we've added with toppings and, and grabbing dough with salads and parfaits and, and the, and the like. We've also increased frequency of meatless and vegetarian to a point where it's at a much higher rate than it was in previous years. And we also have now even more of those options for the students. And the last thing on this is lunch with leadership. And I think you see a picture of Mike. Is Carrie in there too?
Yes.
Yep. So they enjoy serving the kids. It's a program that we started last year, beginning of last year, '23, that we're engaging the administration into actually connecting with the students through serving lunch and enjoying having that social time with, with the students at that point in time. And I think it's, well, Carrie Anne can tell you if she, she enjoyed it or not, but yeah. Yeah. There you go. Yeah, we always could need substitutes. We're good, Carrie. So that, that's something that we'll continue to do. With a school district at this level, at this size, it's, it's pretty easy to do because we have, you know, two schools and it's, and the administrator is very accessible to, to us. Wanted to talk a little bit about next year. So we want to talk about expansion on farm to school and our goal of 20% sourcing from, from Connecticut. Usually a local sourcing is, in our, in our world is, is states that touch us are considered local. So New York, Connecticut and Massachusetts, Rhode Island, they all touch us. And, and that's where local would be. We're, we're looking a little bit deeper into that now. We work with a company called Red Tomato Righteous, Righteous Produce, and they are ECHO certified and they work with local in-state farmers that are, you know, whether they're, you know, new farmers or generational farmers. The big ones that we work with are in Blue Hills, Rogers Orchards, Lyman Orchards in Zen Farms. Those are the sort of big ones that do a lot of the, you know, the, the orchard type things. But they're also digging down deeper now into the smaller farmers as they become interested in joining the, the hub. And then as the hub grows, we actually just feed off the hub through supply chain and bring those products into, into our food, who does supply. We have a plan to bring in what they call a turbo air fryer next year. It's been purchased and should be here for next year. And that'll do is that'll, that'll basically be added to a, what we call our Ruby's Grill Station. So when we're adding things like french fries and onion rings and things like that, you will not, there's no frying in any of our schools. So we do, that's been taboo for a number of years, but obviously air frying has been a very healthy option, as students know, as young people know, as we all know, and probably all have a lot of them in our home. So it'll be a very expensive turbo fryer that will be able to offer many different options from, from that, from that area. So we're looking forward to that. I do not have any of those in my schools right now. So this will be a, a very, very interesting jump off for, for us. We're also looking to try to cultivate some kind of herb garden and/or gardening situation here. I know there's been some chat and we'll continue with that in next year as well and expand that. And also expand the community efforts that we, we, we have been ongoing with over the last couple of years and then into next year. And we just wanted to show what cauliflower popcorn looks like because I'm not quite sure that people like cauliflower popcorn, but it actually is pretty good. So. Communication. We continue to do monthly dining reports for the superintendent and the business client. We do marketing throughout the cafeterias, both digital marketing and in regular poster marketing and on, on station marketing, show plates to show the students what they're getting at each station. And then we, you know, we, we work within the, with the community of the Rambler and the Raptor Report. And we also send out mosaic reports from the POS from my school books, which actually alerts our parents to balances on what their, what their students are eating and put money on account and actually keep up with that whole, that whole area and then working with, with the HAT team on an ongoing basis. So we wanted to just in brevity, you know, talk all about that and then give you an opportunity to ask me any questions or Tim, any questions? and then give you an opportunity to ask me any questions or Tim any questions. And I think that's all I have.
Are there any questions for John and/or Tim that you might want to inquire about? Okay, so hearing none, the next on the agenda is eleven point three, which is the discussion and possible action regarding meal prices. So in your packet is a letter memo that John wrote to Dr. McNamara that explains again what was on the slide. And in doing so, it has been suggested that we should increase to a thirty-one cent increase, but we do not want to overburden the, our population. So we negotiated down to a fifteen cent increase for next school year for the meals. So that would be breakfast and lunch meals would increase up to fifteen cents so that we can cover costs and try to have a slight as opposed to a break even margin. So.
The last time we raised lunch prices, I think, was two years ago. How much was it raised? Do you remember?
It was twenty-five cents.
So, you know, we had a conversation, John, Eva and I had a conversation last week in preparation for this and, you know, the thirty-one cent, we're, we're just trying to cognizant of the fact that, you know, it's, it's challenging times economically. We want to be cognizant of a thirty-one cent jump is a significant one. John, you can jump in correctly if I'm wrong, but your feeling is we'll still, you're still comfortable and confident that we'll break even with a fifteen percent increase.
Yeah. So obviously, you know, this is economics, right? So we're running a business and it is a business. And, you know, we want to do everything that we can to be able to stay, you know, to stay solvent for the district because that's what we get paid for to manage the finances and, and move the program, you know, keep it, keep it financially responsible. So I, I've been, I've been on the, on the forefront of some of the changes that we need for next year. So we've looked at some realignment and staffing and, and obviously some wage changes and things like that. That'll help us, but, you know, knowing that there's headwinds ahead for us with, you know, the participation shortfalls that are anticipated. We, we just, you know, want to be precautious, you know, throw the precaution out there that, you know, that we probably need this just to, you know, interject a little bit more funding into the program next year. And then this, this tool that I, that I mentioned to you is, is one of those that relates to, you know, it comes out annually, then it has to be looked at. And then there's different tolerances to being able to raise prices to a certain limit and then carry over for the next year. So this, I think, takes care of next year. The two years ago that we did it, Colin, was done, but we didn't use it because we went to a universal free program and basically for the last two years, really, you know, this year, yes, but the year before, no. So you really only had one year of the old pricing. And then now we're at the threshold where we need a little bit more.
And, and, you know, our conversation that we had last week was instead of doing thirty-one cent jump in a single year, to kind of split, split the difference and do like a fifteen cent this year and revisit things, obviously, and through conversation with John and he'd come back and do a similar presentation as he does annually for us. And if things are looking then like they're looking now, I would anticipate to get us to the number, the needle could move. Right now it's thirty-one cents, the needle could move a little bit. But I think we'll have an additional year's worth of information to make a more well-informed decision.
What does that bring the total price to for breakfast and lunch?
Two fifty-five for breakfast and lunches on the tier pricing. So it'd be three twenty and the premium price would be three ninety-five.
So in your packet is a recommended motion to increase meal prices by fifteen cents for the start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And I guess
Yeah, I mean, if there's other questions, we could certainly discuss anything.
Okay. So do we have a motion to increase meal prices by fifteen cents for the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year?
So moved, Joe Cluddy.
Thank you. A second?
Second Scott, so yeah.
Thank you, Scott. Any other discussion or questions on that? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much, John.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to eleven point four on the agenda and it's the discussion of the Latin program. It's your, it's, there's an enclosure in the packet.
Yeah. So I'll just, I'll speak to it. Yeah. So it's enclosure eleven point four in the packet. It's just a letter that I, I wrote. So I'll just kind of speak briefly to it. Hopefully people had a chance to read through it. It provides a litany of information about the data and information about the Latin program. So as the board knows, every time we have a retirement or a resignation, I work with the administrative team, we, and ultimately we determine, does it make sense to replace this position? Or is this a position that based off of enrollment and what our current staffing levels look like, can we get away with not replacing that position? We, we made the decision this year to not replace a retirement that we were seeing through social studies. We are replacing to other positions, a phys ed position and a math teaching position at the high school. So we always at the high school, particularly for the high school, we say, you know, do we need to replace this position? With the current Latin teacher submitting her resignation for the end of the, the current school year, we looked at the enrollment and, and the information is, is provided for you. So I'll just kind of look at the, and speak to it just so it's on public record. So during the eighteen, nineteen school year, Latin enrollment was a hundred and ten students. We had a single teacher, but enrollment has declined over the past several years. And there are currently thirty-four students enrolled in Latin and we have a full-time teacher for that position. I, I do want to make sure that I, I say this, that that teacher is also certified to teach English as well and was utilized at the middle school this year to teach a, a reading class for, I think, one, one semester. Thank, thank you. So course requests have been made for next year and there have been a total of forty-two students of both the middle school and the high school requesting Latin. It would be high school Latin enrollment for next year would be twenty-three students. It spread across a variety of levels, different level classes run concurrently to, to, to make the classes larger. So we'll have, you'll have a Latin three and a Latin three honors running at the same time. Or you'll have a, an ECE Latin running concurrently with another one or two Latin programs. So we, so instead of having a class of three or four students, you have a class of, they're still pretty small. You have, you're having a class of, you know, nine or ten students or nine or eleven students. And so even with the projected enrollment, the classes would be small next year at the high school. At the middle school, there are fourteen incoming seventh grade students and five eighth grade students have all expressed an interest in signing up for Latin next year. This is information, I should have said this initially. This is information that we met as a program subcommittee back in the beginning of this month and we discussed this at length with the program subcommittee. I apologize for not mentioning that. During that meeting, the question was asked, what is a typical teacher load? What's a typical student load? And Dr. Bragel shared that it's, you know, it's a range, but forty-two students is well below that range if, if, if we were to run Latin, have a one point O teacher for next year. It is possible that we could try to hire a less than a one point O FTE teacher. And it's certainly possible for us to try to attempt to fill the vacancy at a point six. But if we did that, we would, we really wouldn't be able to run the program at the middle school level. We, we could run it at the high school and have that teacher teach those concurrent high school classes. But at a reduced FTE, we couldn't, we couldn't offer it at the middle school. And, and the belief is that would further decrease the amount of students that are signing up to take Latin in, in high school. The other reality is just the practicality of finding a part-time Latin teacher is, is, it's, it'd be a challenge. It would definitely be a challenge. So again, it was discussed at the program subcommittee is what would happen to those high school students in particular? And we've talked about middle school, so but for the high school students who are taking some Latin classes and really want to finish their, their Latin, finish with Latin and continue to take Latin. I have somebody sitting over here as a student board member who's, who I know, I know if I'm remembering correctly, Oliver, you're, you're a Latin student. And students would have the option to take Latin through virtual high school. They do offer Latin classes through virtual high school. We have, I think, twenty-five seats available through virtual high school and students would certainly be able to continue taking Latin. We recognize it's a different experience, taking it through virtual high school versus having a, you know, an in-person teacher with you. But we do have other students that participate in virtual high school classes. It's one of the reasons we actually have a teacher doing a virtual high school classes that we can have those seats. At the middle school, students who are currently signed up to take Latin would be given the opportunity of taking either French or Spanish. I, I will say this from a, from a, and Lori Vega-Burey, who is our world language department coordinator is here with us and I, I think I can speak on behalf of, we want to offer a robust, we want to offer a robust program of studies with regards to, to language. I think our high school, so we'll get through this. And you know, the, the, but I think what, what I'm looking for is guidance from the board with regard, from the board in totality about whether or not this is a position that we're going to seek to replace or whether it is a position that we're just going to not replace. As I said, I met with a program subcommittee. Penny was at that meeting, Michael Cerusi was at that meeting. And ultimately, I don't want him to speak, but ultimately the recommendation of the program subcommittee, they, they actually noted to recommend to the full board to, to, to not hire a Latin teacher for next year, to go the route of virtual high school for our students that are interested in, in taking Latin and, and again, change, you know, those middle school students to either French or Spanish. We are, we have historically explored other languages and we will continue to explore other languages. In fact, I think the day, a couple of days after I received, or we had our program subcommittee meeting, I received an unsolicited email from an American Sign Language teacher who I think lives in the district and teaches somewhere else and said, let's talk about maybe American Sign Language being something that's available. And that's something that we've, we've explored in the past. As hard as it is to find Latin teachers, it's pretty hard to find American Sign Language teachers as well. But we definitely, you know, we want to continue to offer a robust language program. We certainly explore opportunities, you know, whether it's American Sign Language, whether it's Mandarin, there's, there's other things we would continue to explore that to, to have a wide variety of offerings for our students. But as I said, the vote of the program subcommittee was to not replace this. They recognize and as a subcommittee, the importance of having this be a board discussion. And so we, you know, I, we are bringing it and, and I don't need necessarily a to vote on this, there's not a recommended motion in here. What I'm, what I'm looking for is just guidance from, right? I, I don't think it needs to be a formal vote to do this or to do that. But again, it's just, I'm looking for some guidance and direction because I, I just think it's a board decision at this point. I could certainly do my best to entertain questions that anybody might have. If there's members of the program subcommittee who want to chime in, I would certainly, you know, have your time to do that.
Just to piggyback what you said, I think if we had a very thoughtful discussion, I think the administrative team came with a great plan. They really thought about all the kids and all the different levels and didn't want to cut anybody off in their course. So I think they were thoughtful in their planning and, you know, we don't want to also leave anyone in a bind come August if you can't hire. And at the last minute, children, families have to make a quick decision to change language and score, change their course load.
I had a few questions when I was thinking about this. I was just, I mean, you kind of touched on this too. I'm just making sure that all our Latin students in the high school have an AP potential because I think it's a very important skill to have. And like, like, I mostly think Latin two and three students that are right in their range that if they stop now, they can't switch to Spanish or French and get up to AP in enough time in their senior year. Because, I mean, you kind of touched on this with virtual high school. But I mean, I don't know how virtual high school runs. I don't know if there's a specific time. The only nice part that we had about the small classes is that you were able to fit in students here and there if their schedule didn't work. It was more flexible, I should say, in some regards. Virtual high school may not be and like these students might sometimes be just out of luck for AP potentials. I'm just wondering if we have anything on that. I wonder if only other than you have to say, is, I know SEAL by Literacy test. That's a very important thing that can go on your diploma. And I personally, I didn't ask this in here, but since we might not have a Latin program next year or I might not have the opportunity to take virtual next year. Well, these students still have the opportunity to take the SEAL by Literacy test and even if you do not have an AP or a Latin class that is equivalent to taking that.
I am going to defer to Ms. Vega-Burey.
Okay. So Oliver, what level are you with?
I'm in, you can be CED.
Okay, that's four.
Four.
Yes. So the virtual high school does offer an AP level. So it does have that. And you'd love to try again, the SEAL by Literacy. We do want to open it up to as many students as possible, so that would not be denied. And then imagine that the AP program that offers would maybe give you a little bit more of a, I think it's on a classical level, it has all the possible curriculum like you're used to, but the same kind, it might have some qualities to it. Some of that SEAL by Literacy assessments that they're kind of looking for. Because we know we discussed how that assessment is a little bit more on a non-classical kind of way, right? So I'm hoping that that will help you. And, you know, if we have to look into some other resources, I'm happy to have that because you guys really, really love the SEAL by Literacy and I want you to have us.
I wanted to add that it was a very regretful decision by the policy subcommittee about programs. We didn't see any real options. If, if we thought we could get out there and hire a, a Latin teacher who was, had some other, you could teach some other courses as well, I, I don't think there'd be any question. We'd be, we'd be gutted for it, just didn't see an option. It's, it's, it's very sad. Love to see that program continue, but I just don't see how we can.
Any other?
So I guess with all that being said, you know, the most reasonable option at this point would probably be the virtual high school option as you've all recommended. So I would just say that if it's easy for the Latin students to continue with their accreditation moving forward in the language, I think that would ultimately be a good path to take. Just considering the unfortunate circumstance, it's, you know, the best option. So I would throw my endorsement behind that.
Yeah. So it's, that's the other important thing is to, to note, and I should have said this, is if there are, even after next year, if there are kids coming in who want to take Latin through virtual high school, who've never taken Latin before, let's just say they come in after middle school and taking French or Spanish, they come in and say, well, I want to try Latin, they could take, they could take it through virtual high school. So Latin will still be a class that can be offered to Ram students. It's just in a different avenue. And that happens for other classes that we don't offer here at the building with a, you know, a teacher here on site offer the opportunity for seats. So it would be really similar to other classes that, that we, that we do offer.
I just, one more question about virtual high school. I know you said something along the lines about how the AP is just a little different. For these Latin two and three students who have gone through the Cambridge program at Ram, is this virtual high school going to still be through Cambridge or is it going to be through some other program? Because it's a very different skill set.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, it, it is not exactly Cambridge, not Cambridge sponsored the way your curriculum is already. It is a little different. It is a little different. But I do believe that, from what I understand, and I do need to kind of look into it a little further, we have looked into it somewhat, that the curriculum does align enough that you'll get your years and you'll be able to at least continue X amount of years of that study and say that you've done those many years and hopefully grow in your language proficiency. But it isn't Cambridge based. It is, it is, I don't want to say modernized, but it is less classic, so. And virtual high school is exactly that. Virtual high school is DHS, it is available to any schools that want to participate. So we have a teacher that teaches a class through virtual high school. Used to be Mr. Jordan, which you can try, you know, Mr. Jordan's will be teaching your class. That includes a lot of seats, like you said, 25 of them, where students can take any course they buy. And most of them are not synchronous, although taught by teachers, so it gives you access to building, because like, I don't worry about accessibility. The virtual high school is something that every school pretty much uses. So it's not a unique or unusual program, like, it's something that we generally use.
Is this, like, will this be facilitated in school, or is this on your own time? Like, how does this, like?
Usually, you, usually you'll do it during a study hall.
Okay.
But otherwise, you know, just like any other class, you put that on there.
All right.
So, any other questions? I don't know, Heather, if you just, like I said, I don't feel that this necessitates a vote per se, but I feel like I'd maybe just try to get a consensus of members of the board.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the committee's done a good job with this. It is, you know, it is sad, but I think it's the right decision. Does anyone else have any thoughts on it from the board?
So the consensus that I'm reading is that not move, not move forward with Latin. Okay, okay. I think I'm good with that, Heather. Like I said, I don't think it requires a formal vote. I have clear direction.
Okay. And I think you have indicated the other students are here?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes. Hopefully, how we do today. All right, well, we are going to take a pause. So I mentioned earlier on that we are recognizing our students that receive the CAPE Student Leadership Award. And so Dr. Brazil is going to get up and introduce our high school students who have come from their previous events. So thanks for coming, guys.
And no changes between events, apparently, right? Busy man over here. So with that, I will start with Sean. Sean Connolly is a senior. He's a four-year honor student, a three-sport athlete, and a student leader here at Ram. A top 15 student, Sean earned membership in the National Honor Society, the National Spanish Honor Society, and the National Business Honor Society. He also is a two-year member of Ram's DECA program and a two-time finalist in the statewide DECA competitions. Earning a 4.64 weighted GPA, Sean successfully passed three AP college-level exams over the last two years, European History, US History, and Statistics. And he currently is enrolled as a senior in three additional AP college-level classes, English, Spanish, and BC Calculus. I'm sure probably passing those as well, but yet to be seen until July. Sean maintained an A average over five years of Spanish classes at Ram Middle and High School. So shout out to the World Language. And the SEAL of Bileiteracy as well. A dedicated Ram community member and leader, Sean served as a peer tutor for the Ram Spanish Department, volunteered for the English Department in executing the Hope Scholarship Award, and assisted in running the Ram School Store Operations and the DECA program as an officer. As a sophomore, Sean earned the Ram Physical Education Award, and he played Ram varsity soccer, basketball, and baseball, earning the CIAC Academic All-Conference Academic Award all four years at Ram. In 2024, Sean was awarded the Ram Basketball Coaches Award, and last year, he received the 2023 Ram Baseball Golden Glove Award, earned selection as a CIAC All-Conference Player as part of Ram Baseball, and was invited as, to represent Ram in the CIAC Junior All-Star Select Game in Connecticut. New England Baseball Journal highlighted Sean as a top recruit, and most recently, the 2024 Rawlings Perfect Game highlighted Sean as a Northeast Region Selection. Sean committed to attend Stone Hill College in the fall of 2025 in Massachusetts, and played Division One Baseball on an athletic and academic scholarship, and he plans to study accounting. He also recently committed to attend Salisbury School here in Connecticut and play baseball for a year as a postgraduate. Congratulations, Sean. Something he's learned in his athletic endeavors as well.
Congratulations.
And now we have Marina McLaughlin, who's demonstrated leadership in many areas, both in and out of the classroom over the last four years. As a four-year member of the girls volleyball team and a three-time state champion, Marina has played almost every position on the court, always willing to do whatever is best for the team and working to support younger players. Her selflessness was recognized by both her teammates and Coach Guernsey, who gave her his coaches award at the end of the season, and by the CCC, who named her an All-Conference recipient. She also played three years of varsity basketball and spread her passion for the sport to younger children in the community, volunteering with the Marlboro Youth Athletic Association's youth basketball program and assistant coaching her younger sister's team. Through her jobs at local children's camps and a math tutoring center, she has gained valuable leadership experience, which she hopes to build upon in her career in the international business and finance field. Congratulations, Marina. Oh, and she also got the SEAL of Bileiteracy. And just for anyone who doesn't know yet, the SEAL of Bileiteracy is an extra seal that goes on our students' diplomas, which is new for us. And these students are recognized as bilingual.
Congratulations.
Thank you guys so much for being here. Appreciate it. Congratulations to you guys.
Right. So that brings us to 11.5, which is the first read of some policies. Colin, you want to just take this through the policies?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, I'm happily, happy to talk to you. So, so I think it was last week, it goes by quick. Last week, we did, we can't remember. We had a meeting with the Policy Subcommittee and just brought a few policies for review and revision and potentially deletion. This is a first read, so we're not going to take any action this evening. The first policy is Policy 6205, Curricular Exemptions. This is an existing policy that we're making very, pretty basic changes to. The most significant change is on the second page where it just mentions that, that students, if they choose to be excused from a certain subject matter that's being discussed, that they will be given, otherwise participate in other programs and opportunities for academic work as determined by the teacher. And then the other thing is, that's associated with this is we, while we have had a curricular exemption policy for years, we didn't have a form for parents to fill out and hand in. So this also would include a form attached to the policy. I can certainly take any questions if anybody has. All right, I will move right on to Policy number 1160. So this is a policy that is not required, and I had initially brought this policy to the Board Subcommittee and talked about the possibility of deleting it because the policy in its current existence is called a Community Relations Program. And what I said to the board is, we don't really have a Community Relations Program. We certainly make an attempt to communicate with members of the community and have positive relations with the community, but this is an unnecessary policy. You can see there's no legislation attached to it. The feedback that I received from the Policy Subcommittee was, we like the spirit, correct me if I'm wrong, we like the spirit of this policy. We like the idea of putting it out there that this is a goal of ours. But, but you're right, it's not a program, so let's kind of have a policy aligned to more what it was. So what I did was, I spent some time looking at other school districts that have similar policies and drafted language that is in the red, that basically just that we, it's in some saying that, you know, the board recognized that it is, the education of children is, includes a variety of stakeholders and is a shared effort with members of the school district, staff, and the community. And essentially that we will work together, we will communicate between the home and school, it will be regular, two-way, and meaningful, and families will be made to feel welcome in the school, and their, and their support and assistance will be sought. So I drafted the language, I brought it to the Policy Subcommittee last week, made a couple of minor tweaks and adjustments based off of the feedback of the Subcommittee, and what you have is, is the recommended language coming out of that Subcommittee. The, any questions or comments about this particular policy? The next one is Policy 6112, which is School Day. And this is a recommendation for deletion. I want to be clear to our students that I'm sure at home captured by this, by this meeting, that we are not eliminating the School Day. We are, we are, this is, this is an unnecessary policy. It just is simply reciting, restating what is in Connecticut general statutes, giving the, you know, the length of the school year of 180 days, and essentially, it's unnecessary. And that's, as people know, we're trying to get rid of unnecessary stuff that is a simple one-sentence or two-sentence policy that's just simply regurgitating state statutes. So the Policy Subcommittee was in agreement that this was a good one to bring forward to you all for deletion. Similarly, the next policy is 6114, Drills for Emergencies. It's simply restating Connecticut general statute, we are required to do drills for emergencies by eliminating this policy. We are not eliminating that requirement. We do 10 of them at least a year, required to do 10 evacuation drills, I'm sorry, seven evacuation drills and three lockdown drills. And we are in compliance with this, and we will continue to be in compliance with this particular policy. But again, it's an unnecessary policy. The next one is Policy 6115, which is the Silent Meditation and Pledge of Allegiance. Certainly not looking to eliminate that expectation. It is actually required that we do provide an opportunity for students that wish to choose to recite the pledge to do that. The reason that we are bringing it forward is actually, this is one that is found in two different places. I don't have the exact policy number, but there is a, there is a newer policy, I think it was last updated in 2019, that is current, and, and basically, we're just, as everybody knows, we're trying to eliminate redundancy whenever possible as well, just to try to thin the policy book down. So again, it's not something that we are looking to get rid of, it is just simply, something simply that we're trying to get rid of, the redundancy being that there are two separate policies on the exact same topic. I can certainly entertain any questions people might have about any of these policies.
We're wording on the communication one looks much better.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I appreciate the feedback of the Subcommittee helping to get that done. So without any feedback, whether it's tonight or after the meeting, these would come to the board at the June meeting for a second reading and adoption and or deletion. So that, that's it, Heather.
All right, great, thank you. That brings us to item 11.6, the financials.
Okay, so 11.6A in your handouts or in your packets is the Expenditure and Revenue Report as of April 30th, 2024. I am projecting a net favorable position of $1,055,261. We're still seeing an increase in school use fees, Medicaid and interest rates, which is helping to offset the loss in our excess cost, which is currently projected by the state and our departure of a high-cost special ed student. Our departments were given May 17th as a deadline for our spending. So they have now wrapped up most of their spending for the classrooms, since it should have been already, right, to be purchased and utilized in this year's budget. So by next board meeting, we'll have a better outlook on where we stand and how things are ironing out for the end of the school year. The Capital Improvement Fund is focusing on the central office rooftop unit. The installation is going to begin on June 17th, so that's going to displace central office for a little over a week and a half. We will find new residents within the building. So, but we will communicate how to get ahold of us and where we are located in case anybody needs us. The Facility Condition Assessment, we're still just awaiting the finalized report, which could take up to eight weeks. It's already been about three. The Capital Nonrecurring Fund is currently focusing on Phase One of the Field Improvement and Drainage Project. We had a kickoff meeting on May 15th, and the project was supposed to start after lacrosse. So the drainage project will start after the lacrosse season, which now got extended to a potential of May 24th, because they're in the postseason playoffs, if I'm not mistaken. And so we started on the Route 316 north half of the field this morning. So that is the, I don't know the word I want to use, but they're like, readying it up and making it, the sand injections and all that fun jazz. So they're taking off stuff to put on new stuff.
Phrase movie.
Great, that's the word, phrase movie.
Came to me.
So I'm learning all these new terms. But are there any questions that the board may have based on what I presented?
Just to point out that the new guy finally is, doesn't have anything.
Congratulations, I'm glad.
And the other, the other new guy who has all the questions isn't here today.
Well, hopefully that means that we're doing good at educating and keeping everybody informed. All right, 11.6B is the Food Service Monthly Sales and Expenditure Report as of April 30th, 2024. So there's a current loss reflected for the month of April for this year of eighty, or through the year, of $86,261.17. But the positive news, it was only about $2,139 more than last month. So we had an, our Healthy Choice funding came in, and one other payment from the State of Connecticut, which helped negate some of that. So we seem to be leveling off the losses, and hopefully that'll keep up for May and June. So we still have a positive fund balance in our fund, which is always good news for starting the new school year. Are there any questions that the board may have on that? Okay, so hearing none, we're going to go to 11.6C, which is the Student Activity Report. And basically, everything is in balance with the bank as of April 30th, 2024. Any questions on that?
It's still fun to read through. It really is.
I'm glad somebody's reading it, honestly. All right, so 11.6D is the Short Term Investment Fund. As of the end of April 30th, we reinvested dividend of $1,597.90. In addition, the rates for the month are pretty steady and level. So I guess that's a good thing, that we're not seeing the fluctuations like we did early on when we started this. But again, I think for the most part, the economy seems to be leveling a little bit in regards to interest rates. So are there any questions on this debt fund? All right, so the last thing on the agenda is 11.6E. These are the transfers, budget appropriation transfers for the months of April, March and April. So in totality, there's 39 journal entries that I'm presenting, and they total $389,907.55. So I did a summary of all of the individual transactions to put it all on one page. The journal entry number 184, that was for $155,081.85. That was money, funds available that we felt were available based on benefits. That was money, funds available that we felt were available based on benefits that are, were from vacancies and enrollment changes for families either coming on or getting off. And that was really the biggest one. There, and it is also the 213 is the entry number for the $33,000 for the Voice Over IP Facility Monitoring System. So I think we updated the Board on all of that. So are there any additional questions that anyone might have on these transfers? No? Okay, so there is a motion that I feel Heather can walk us through for that.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the transfers for March 2024 and April 2024 in the total amount of $389,907.55?
So moved. Scott Sogian.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have a second?
I'll second Amy Romachek.
Thank you, Amy. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, that brings us to the Committee Reports, Facility Safety and Transportation. I don't think Mike is on Joe or Gabe.
We didn't meet.
Yeah, we haven't met.
You know, okay, the May was canceled, say that. Okay, sorry. And the Finance Audit Committee, that was canceled? All right, negotiations? Kirsten or Amy or Mike?
We've met, we have nothing to report.
Yeah, we're still negotiating with two different groups right now.
Okay, but these are going fast. Policy?
You see the results.
Yep, you guys have been busy.
Yep.
Okay.
Same old, same old with that. I don't mean it like that. I just mean that's what we do. We go through all the policies.
Yep. Okay, and then Program Communications Committee?
Yeah, we met to discuss the Latin program.
Okay. All right, and Carrie, are there anything on the CAE? Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't find the mute, turn the mute off. No, there's nothing new on the CAE. I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, that brings us to the Public Comments. Hebron Andover and Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at BOE public meetings is welcome. The Public Comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act, discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Is there anybody who would like to make public comments?
Yes, I would. Scott Sogian.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. You know me. A recent letter to the editor into the local weekly paper pointed out that we have a pledge of allegiance here, and Scott just stands there, doesn't recite it. And I just, you got the letter in front of you, and did you paste it in chat? And I paste it in chat, the link to the letter if people want to see it. Basically, I joined the Quakers about 40 years ago. I'm not active now. But as a Quaker, I don't take oaths, and the pledge is an oath. So I am not up there disrespecting anything. If this hadn't come out in the newspaper, I might not have ever brought it up. But, you know, I'm sure various people here have noticed. I'm sure Gabe, who sits next to me, has noticed that I just stand there respectfully. But I, I just wanted to point out that this is not a lack of respect for the Board or its procedures. It's not a lack of respect for the country, which I love. It is just a refusal to take any oaths. And the letter speaks for itself besides that. Just wanted to let everyone know, and I'll let it's out in the public.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment?
Yep, one more.
Even spelling Marlboro President of Ram Leadership Association. I'm really glad to hear that the Board Subcommittee had a good, hearty conversation on the Latin program. It's a tough spot to be in. I just want to say Angel Banks has been great for the school, great for the program, and it's really going to be a loss for the school. Going to virtual is not the best. If we live from anything from COVID, having our students online, not even with a teacher, just in a program, is really not the best way to educate young citizens. The loss of a teacher in a classroom is always something that concerns the REA from a teacher perspective. Over the past five to six years, I've heard the same conversation. We've lost our Woods program, can't find anybody. We've lost our Foods program, can't find anybody. Now we're losing our Latin program, can't find anybody. The real question is why? And I'm here to tell you, it's because we don't pay Ram teachers enough. We've had four resignations in the past two months. Those people are not leaving Ram to go to lower-bench jobs. And so I just ask the Board to keep that in mind as we go into negotiations next year. I had a little chuckle when our friend Winston's came and said they're looking at a 3% to 5% increase for their employees. Ram teachers barely scratched 3%. This isn't so much about finding people, it's about getting other teachers to want to come to Ram and be paid the salary that they deserve. There are Latin teachers out there. I spent some time in other schools on a knee-ask visit. They got German, they got Italian, they got French, they got Spanish. I sat in all those classes. But they pay their teachers, and that's why their teachers stay there. We need to do a better job attracting qualified talent to come and teach in this district. And if the salaries were increased, you might be able to find a Latin teacher from Bolton or from another school that's willing to come here and work at a great school and with great teachers in the Latin district. So I just want to think about that as you move forward and make your decision. I would like to see the job posted at least for a couple of months. Maybe somebody's out there. But just to kind of throw the towel and say, well, we're going to do this online program. I think it's a disservice to the kids that are in Latin, and maybe just something else to explore before we do head down that road. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, thank you. Excuse me. Brings us to the informational items, the calendar of events and the student discipline reports.
So just with the calendar events, I will say it is going to, you know, the last, the last few weeks of school are upon us, and they are going to run us over like a freight train. And there's a whole host of activities going on, as Ava was mentioning when she talked about, you know, she provided, we did, junior prom was a couple of weeks ago, senior prom was just this past weekend. Senior skip day may have been today, although that's an unofficial activity, but, you know, it happens.
Semi-official at this point.
You know, I sat in on the 19th, 10th grade honors recognition award ceremony today. We're going to do it tomorrow for 11th and 12th graders. We have, High School Awards Night is coming up on Thursday. We have Raptor Recreation Day, which is a big event. I think I mentioned this to the Board before, the governor last year basically designated the, I think it's the Friday before Memorial Day to be the Get Outside and Play Day. We have rebranded it as Raptor Recreation Day. That's going to be happening at both schools. Outdoor games and activities for, it's a half-day, so it worked out well from a timing perspective. Seniorship to Six Flags is coming up at the end of this month. Evening in the Arts is coming up at the end of this month. I think Ava mentioned it when she was talking as well, a new event for high school seniors, the visiting the elementary schools, which has been, you know, Penny works really collaboratively with the elementary school principals from our feeding districts and set it up. And people are really excited about it. It's a really, it's a feel-good moment. So we're excited to be able to do that. At the middle school, similarly, tons of activities and award ceremonies coming up. Our teams, each of the teams has an award ceremony during the context of the School Day. Those are coming up. They have eighth-grade promotion is going to be, hopefully, God willing, outside in good weather on the 14th. And so, yeah, so lots of stuff. The thing that I'll just simply say, I said it last year, I'll say it again this year. I didn't say it at the beginning of the meeting, is I just, I don't expect too many students to be watching this, but I just hope that our students make good decisions in these last couple of weeks of school because it's a time of celebration, but also sometimes that can be a time of bad decision-making, and we just want to make sure that we're safe in these last few weeks of school leading up to graduation. So that concludes my overview of the calendar events for the discipline data. It's in your Board packet, and the information is available for you to look at. But again, I think everybody's ready and excited for the end of the school year to be here. So anyways, that concludes my informational item report.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to move into executive session? Do I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's evaluation and to invite Dr. Colin McNamara, Superintendent, into that executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Carrie. Do I have a second?
Yeah, second. Gabe Marks.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed?